Welcome everyone here. It's good to see everyone here for the discussion. In an effort to keep the meeting moving, I just want to lay down a few ground rules. There'll be several opportunities for you to speak. But please be cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of people here. So please come to the microphone, state your name, state your address. Answer your question, make your comment, whatever you'd like to say, then please sit down. Like I said, we have a lot of people here, I want to try to get to everybody. You know, Moorestown is a Quaker town, so I thought, you know, in the spirit of trying to incorporate some Quaker values, the Quakers have something called meaningful worship, where everyone gets a chance to stand up, make a point, and then sit back down again. What we don't want to get into is any arguments. You can ask us a wide range of questions. If we have your answer, that's great. If we don't, we'll tell you that we'll get it to you as best we can. There's a portion of the public meeting called Resident Request and Presentations. That's just that. That's for residents to stand up, make a request, or if they have a presentation, you know, you're welcome to do that. If you have a comment regarding a specific agenda item, wait until that portion comes up. And please, by all means, try to keep your comments limited to, you know, scanning up maybe one time if you have a comment. If you have a comment about several times, you can stand up. Okay? If anybody has any questions, please feel free to let it rip. Okay, Scott, take away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things on the agenda thing for our workshop session. But I'm going to start with a lot of people are here trying to hear council discuss. Later on in the meeting, council is going to be asked to vote on a contract to outsource sanitation to CASWORC Enterprises. And before we get to that, as council certainly is fully aware of, and I think perhaps a lot of the public may be by this point as well, the township has been negotiating with the CWA, the bargaining unit that the vast majority of the workforce employers are in over the last couple of months, heavily over the last several weeks. In order to find a solution that would enable the township to achieve the savings that we're looking for while maintaining the manpower numbers that we have. Those that have not heard yet, the numbers on the outsourcing are fairly simple. Last year in 2013, sanitation costs attached were roughly $1.2 million between employee costs and operating expenses. The contract from CASWORC is about $425,000 a year. So there's substantial savings could be made by going in this route. But at the same time, council has been adamant that their cost savings initiative not affect the services that the township provides. And what I'd like council to consider tonight is, I think, a solution that is the best of both worlds, provides substantial cost savings while at the same time provides the township with the services that it deserves by retaining the entire CWA workforce. There is a memorandum of agreement that is outsourced around. Council will send a couple graphs, a bottle graph earlier this afternoon. Hopefully you've had a chance to review that. If not, I believe we can discuss that if you have any questions. But at the end of the day, it's an agreement that I encourage council and recommend council to pass. I want to thank Mr. Leetag, Mr. Vemsteed, the rest of the CWA members and administration for working with the council to come to this negotiated agreement that council can be asked to vote for.
Where is Mr. Leetag?
I did see him walk in.
He walked in there.
And I want to thank council for their support and direction. And I also want to thank Mr. Michelle and for a ton of work that he's done, running hundreds of different options multiple different times, and as well as our labor attorney, Carmen Saginario. I guess at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Leetag to come to the microphone if you want to end his words and confirm, I guess, what I'm saying, and then Mr. Droussen.
This is located at 26th High Street in Mount Holly. We are the collective bargaining agent for the bargaining here assisting the public works, the water and sewer treatment plant, as well as the clerical employees here in the township. I won't add much to what Scott said. I think that he covered the headline points. You know, I won't stand here and say that we support the privatization of sanitation because we don't. We are disappointed and concerned that a frontline service that had been provided for years by dedicated township employees is now going to be provided by an outside contractor. We don't agree with the decision to privatize. That said, we do agree and we do support, I support, the memorandum of agreement, which is going to essentially provide additional services by reallocating resources from the sanitation division to the public works division. Public works division has had reduced staff over a number of years, reduced resources available to it, and we're hopeful that this reallocation of staff and resources will actually bolster the public services provided by the public works department. Obviously, job security is a concern, is an issue, especially in this difficult climate, and we're pleased that we were able to reach an agreement to transfer staff without any loss of jobs. We're hopeful that this is part of the relationship going forward because we still have issues to negotiate and collect the bargaining agreement for the next few years. So this was certainly an intense period of discussion, but it is not over. And I would ask and challenge all of the members of the council to continue this dialogue with us in a proactive way and share information with us in a proactive way. There are challenges that you have as a governing body and challenges that we have as a workforce that we need to encounter together to deal with physical budget finance or challenges. And you shouldn't forget, we kind of where jobs are threatened and services are a threat to the core of us before we go down that kind of dialogue. We have a good understanding about the role of the community, what happens really affects jobs, hopefully expand the resources in a different area of the township. But, you know, we're going forward. How we settle a long-term contract and to ensure that we continue to provide the highest quality services for Moorestown residents. So we do support the memorandum of agreement. We ask you to support it because it's the right thing to do given the circumstances. And we will be discussing the memorandum of agreement and other issues with our membership this week. Given the compressed timeframe of these discussions, we are going to be talking to our membership this week about all the details. We didn't want to announce this in the press over the weekend. We wanted to deal with our membership directly.
Mr. Leetag, have you signed this memorandum of agreement yet?
No, I have not.
Well, I certainly agree that we can now allocate our resources to taking care of our assets, our roads, our parks, with the manpower that we're having. And I certainly want to thank you for working with us. I know it's not easy, but we have to do, and so we thank you. Mr. Crewe, you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, just confirming with Mr. Droussen, we're going to have council vote on this once we begin the official action part of the meeting. So perhaps with discussion after we adopt the consent agenda resolution, council can vote on the O A definitely.
Are there a lot of big questions?
No, I would ask you to go.
Okay.
Question for Mr. Leetag. Your signature on the agreement is dependent upon your communication with your membership as to whether or not you're authorized to sign it?
No. My signature on the agreement, if you look at the last lines of the agreement, they state that the union and the township will recommend ratification by their respective governing bodies. It's either the last line or the last couple of lines. So my signature on this is a tentative agreement. We'll bring it to our membership, we'll vote this way.
You expect it will be approved?
I hope that it will be approved, and we're going to do everything we can to recommend ratification.
I'm sorry, what did you say at the beginning with your membership, Mr. Leetag?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything?
Any questions from the council before we move on to the next topic?
Okay. Next thing on our workshop agenda is a topic that Garwood brought up at that council meeting, which is a question about water sewer refunds.
Yeah, I've noticed over the past couple of meetings that we have this policy of refunding leaking fixtures. I can understand when it's, you know, a hundred dollars or so, but we've had several claims come in, well over a thousand dollars. We've had one in there for thirty-seven hundred dollars. Yeah, I think that when we start to get to these amounts, I think it's abusive of the policy, and I think we should just refine it a little bit and start to put a catwalk in. I think it's getting a little excessive at times.
Tom, you care to cover on that?
It's always been a policy. We expect to, first of all, we have to collect these things that happen. We're still on a management system. The township has invested three million dollars plus to convert to their system. So being a management system, there's chances of error between reading and inputting and stuff. So a lot of the ones I believe we're probably referring to would be a policy change is the ones for leaking fixtures.
Leaking fixtures, yeah.
What the township does is it faces the entire year's sewer bill on the first quarter water usage consumption, which takes into consideration, you know, the residents not watering their lawns and stuff like that. So what happens is if someone can prove that they had a leak during that time, they get bills, et cetera, and they have normal water readings during that time compared to the normal history, we will make an adjustment. We never adjust the water because we have to pay for the water ourselves from the drinking water above what we use in our own wells. But we do adjust the sewer to a more normal. So council can certainly change that policy if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, if somebody paid $3,000 to somebody for a leaky faucet, I mean, fix the faucet. You know, it's just, it just doesn't make sense to me. There's, I think it's getting a little abusive at times. You know, if it's a review purpose, if somebody had a catastrophic event, fine. I mean, you know, it happens once in a while. But I think, you know, as I'm starting to see more and more of these come through, there's a lot of them. There, you know, I know there's one on tonight for fourteen hundred dollars. That's a lot of water. I mean, that's a lot of leaky faucets.
We can certainly have a discussion, so Scott's water department, the partners, something that sit together and make recommendations.
Yeah, some sort of catwalk.
That's a, just a fresh open, you know.
Yeah, that's, I just think that would be appropriate. Thanks.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Tom. I'm going to make somebody else come to the microphone now. I know it's crowded up there, but Chuck Dawson is out there. Councilman Chuck, as you know, is the chair of the Moorestown Environmental Advisory Committee. Tom and I met with him a couple of weeks ago to discuss proposal to review the problems at Strawberry Lake. We've talked about issues at Strawberry Lake beyond the dam, and the simple fact is, you don't really know what the problems are at Strawberry Lake through Chuck's contacts each now, the company that can do everything we need to have done, suit to nuts, in order to tell us what's wrong, and I guess prescribe a solution to the problem. So with that, Chuck, if you want to end any...
We just want to talk through it real quickly, what they're proposing. The first half is just, we've provided them already with all the reports going back to nineteen ninety, ninety that we have, so they can review data and stuff. And the last data was taken on the lake around 2003, but they have all those reports to review. The next step is they're going to go three times during the summer, once in back to late April, and again beginning July and late August. They're going to take water samples probably in the middle, what we call the four seconds of the lake's flow each day. They'll take it once for intervals, and they'll do this three times. What they're looking for there is things like pH, oxygen, water temperature, conductivity. Connectivity tells you how much particles are in the water, good idea of what the water condition is. Next thing they'll do is they'll take a sample of water, we shared, and that water we sent out to the laboratory, and a lot of water we look at our alcalinity, hardness, alkalinity is your pH, again, total phosphorus. And we know our lake is high phosphorus, like we mentioned before, we're running about ten times what historically, about ten times what considered a good lake should be. We don't know what we are now, though. Nitrate, nitrogen, total spend of solids, floor fill, these help that out. Phytoplankton, zooplankton, so they factor healthier lake as far as keeping the algae down. They'll do that, again, three times a year. Then what we're looking to do with a volunteer program moving forward, have some volunteers start working, so they'll come in, they'll train volunteers, volunteer the open, while one is coming to the lake, but a half-day training session. Training is, you know, what to look for, probably taking some water samples, but also going around the lake, looking at plants, what plants are good, what plants aren't, going around the lake. Review all this data and come back with some recommendations of what they feel, the condition of lake is, and what thoughts, and whether we can do anything or not. The next step is, we know that the upper end of the lake, we know we have a weed problem. I think most of you have seen it, pretty much that upper end of the lake, that whole section of that first dam, it's going to constant, we can't even see the water in the summer come here. It's constant weeds. There's some thought that that may be because the water's getting showered there, and the upper dam is acting as a trap for the soap coming down. Yeah, we don't really know, but one of the things we're proposing is possible wet treatment. So they're going to file an application for $225 to get, so we have an app, you know, permit, in case you want to use a wet treatment. That permit will also cover one, the algae treatment also. So we'll cover both areas if we decide we want to do those. I don't know the cost of those, but I guess it's probably not going to come at all. Last part of it, they're going to do is a bathymetric survey. Bathymetric survey is basically they're going to check the depth, do a whole profile of the lake, check the depth of the lake, and also the depth of the sediment at the bottom of the lake. That'll give us a pretty good idea. We did a little bit of this back, we did the dredging back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-six. But again, we don't, we have really good numbers from that. But this gives not only the depth down of the sediment, but also the depth of the sediment, get a feel for it. And at least you'll know if we have to deal with this down in the future someplace, we should deal with it. Maybe only a small section of the lake needs, maybe not they need it. We don't, again, we don't really know. Okay, this will be done during the summer. We should get the results by late summer, we know where we are. There's both going to be a long-term recommendation for us for managing the lake, and we'll just see how we want to go forward with that in the future. Think the cost of this, basically, the cost of the, except for the bathymetric study, the cost is about, it was ninety-two hundred dollars. The bathymetric study is by far the most expensive part of it. It's, that's the depth, that's ninety-six hundred dollars. And again, I don't really have a cost for doing the treatment. My guess is that'd be running, I could get a full treatment, both for weeds and for algae, it's probably around twenty-five hundred dollars.
After we went over the proposal, you know, the obvious next part of the discussion was how we would pay for it, considering that Strawberry Lake is such a jewel, a de-jewel in our open space inventory, that it seemed logical that we would use the open space trust fund in order to pay for the stuff.
Remind me, is that all our open space, our roster of open space inventory? Yes.
I have no problem doing that. I mean, I think most people consider it such an asset, and it's just a beautiful section of town, and it's becoming something that we need to really maintain. That's one of the things, you know, we've been harping on, I know, we've been harping on for the past three years, we need to maintain our assets, and this is one of those assets that we need to maintain. So I would have no problem making progress with that.
I mean, just so you know, I mean, some of the things that I suggest, not all of the things that council, like the chemical testing, that's something we probably want to go on with for a few years. That's something that most lakes should do, continue to walk along.
I think, yeah, I think that one of the problems that we have, because we're running into such economic difficulties, is we say, okay, we'll do it next year, we'll push it up. These are things I think we have to have a maintenance plan set up, and we can see, like, we're going with our roads infrastructure right now. I think we need to do the same thing with our assets like that. So I think that's something we need to address and make happen.
If I could interject with Mr. Dawson and Mr. Rich, I'm going to just connect the conference, who's trained in-house, who cared for such a lake, is that not true, Ted?
Ah, yes. Actually, I have a certificate, but I'm not sure we're certified. Can you do it then, Ted, and give your link?
And beyond that, actually, I gave the last council a picture of what the lily pads look like at Strawberry Lake. It's important that we understand it's a jewel, and that people drive by it and see what we are and what our town is. And we who worked on the lake back in the nineties and got the dredging done, and that's amazing, will be expensive to do, but as the deputy mayor said, we need to step up to that in a second.
Some sort of bear somewhere else.
There's also, we're going to meet with Scott and that township also, I was just making this, issues the lake, we want to look at all the two. You were already recommended a pass, we'll discuss others also.
I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you for all your work.
The last thing we have for the workshop discussion is standing appointments. Are you ready to discuss that a little bit?
I get council memo that outlined, I think, there's three outstanding...
I don't have a spot in MEAC, no? Unfortunately, I mean, you didn't say it's a two appearances in one zoning. We have our zoning according to, or something like that.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a few comments?
Of course, yeah.
We're all in receipt of a letter from the appearance committee, Ms. Sanguine, in regards to the things that went on regarding trying to get things correct and naming people this year. This was a difficult year for the appearance committee for the second year in a row, and I think it would be good for us in October, November to ask the chairs as liaisons what their thoughts are in regards to the membership of the committee going forward. And also, in regards to that, in this, in regards to Ms. Pound's letter, I would ask that, since there are two alternate positions open in appearance, and I am the liaison to the appearance committee, that Mr. Neil Johnson, who fulfills the requirements that are in the code of the town that are called out in this letter, be restored to the appearance committee as an alternate, and that Ms. Gina Ziegler, who I do not know was contacted, at least contacted and asked if she would go once we'd be back on the committee. I think that those would be positive things for appearance committee, which serves it down well.
Something worth considering. Do we have an opening zoning board as well?
That's correct.
And I think there is, I saw the name Joe McGuire, and Joe from town, and I'd like to discuss, in addition to Greg's picks, Mr. McGuire being appointed to the zoning board.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, he signed this letter, and I think she referred to the fact that Mr. Johnson was, you know, certain to multiple criteria that the township looks for in this appearance committee. And if he is the only one that would have that, perhaps the other alternate spot, whether it's architect, agency owner, I think planner, I think Neil fits all those.
Yeah, he does.
Circumstances that maybe were on Neil that maybe there are.
But we should, that's really, that's really, thank you, Scott, because that really calls out, we should be sure that we actually fit the rest of the code. We need to look at the second one correctly, so they could, to correctly. Also, Mr. Mayor, I got also, Mr. Conley, whom we've discussed, would he look at for low mod or ethics should the appointment come up? I understand that it's not there now. I would appreciate that as well.
You go back and look at my notes, and we have discussed Mr. Cameron on MEAC. I need to confirm that, which hopefully there's no being anymore, but we will definitely consider him.
Let's go to the future.
Next go around, yeah, absolutely. Just remind you, resolution? Okay, so I guess you have other resolutions?
I'm sorry, I'm not third direction on what you're looking to do. So we have someone up here, which is what?
Mr. Neil Johnson.
Neil and Gina.
If Gina will accept.
So just I think, I think we just do Neil, and then we'll have to, can you call her?
I can, and we'll also have to make sure that that fits within Mr. Crewe's scope.
So Neil as an alternate?
As an alternate, and then we'll do the other spot for now, and then we'll do Joe McGuire, interning a...
Okay.
And just in regards to the appointments as well, I would ask that we address this, have a calendar item addressed this in October, November for the points that I laid out, to how we proceed. I'll just leave it at that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any else another, Scott?
That's all I have for workshop.
Okay. Then we're going to move into the regular portion of the meeting. These discussion items, these are discussion regarding scheduling matters, official action agenda, any amendments. They were, we're supposed to be going once in minutes, but they are not going to be ready, but they will be ready for the next meeting. So, you want to keep a motion?
A motion to continue.
A motion to continue, yeah, the minutes of the meeting to the next, I'll continue motion to continue minutes to the next meeting.
So, move, second.
A favor?
Aye.
Move. I do have a scheduling matter for Mr. Michelle, Mr. Crewe. I'd like to set up, start setting up budget workshops, budget special meeting, as soon as possible that the budget, the 2014 budget presented to us. So he can coordinate with Patty, and like I said, it has to be a special meeting in the morning, I can get that scheduled as soon as possible so we can start moving on 2014 budget. Any other problems?
No problem at all.
Okay. And we'll move to reports from members of council. I guess we'll start with the deputy mayor, Jordan.
Nothing right now, except for EDAC is meeting tomorrow night. Tree committee was canceled because of snow.
Mr. Newcomb?
I just did a meeting in the appearance committee, and that was really nice to see, it was fully attended for the people that came there. I also went over the recreation buildings just before this meeting, and it was really great to see that there were people using the weightlifting in the bottom of the rec building, direct weightlifting center, and in the, in the gym, there were kids in the tennis program, and in the third floor, there was a group of people being instructed in how to dance, step dancing, I believe.
Is that right, Teresa, was it step dancing?
That was great to see.
Did you do it, Greg?
That's all I have.
Mr. Garwood?
Yeah, I have two items to report. I sat down with members of the sustainability group and bicycle coalition group, and I got these two guys talking about safe roads programs and moving some of the bicycle bike initiatives, safe roads initiatives, in combination with the sustainability group. So I think that'll be a great positive, positive thing. Also, there's been several gatherings with, we're bringing the music to Main Street back into the light. I know the rec center, recreation partners had several concerts up at the community house. We've sat, gotten together with Mark Morgan, the MBA, and some members of the community house to see if we can make this a bigger, better event for some of the summer nights in town, and maybe close up the street a bit and get some vendors out there, and get some restaurants to get tables out, and just make it a really nice summertime event. So stay tuned for further updates on that, and that's all I got.
Sounds great. A couple of weeks back, I attended my first EDAC meeting, my advisory committee, and at that meeting, Keith Almer was appointed chair, and we started laying out things we're looking to do in, I see Teresa Miller, in 2014. So stay tuned for some great things coming out of the advisory committee. Okay, scheduling items, again, I jumped to go in and discuss the budget workshop. Does anybody else have any scheduling items they'd like to discuss, right?
No.
Okay, our upcoming meetings are here. Mooreston High School, the IT room, February tenth through twenty-four, seven thirty P.M. Okay, our upcoming meetings are here. Moorestown High School, the IT Room, February 10th through 24th, 7:30 PM. And don't miss them, it should be great. Any agenda updates?
Just the MOA is pretty discussed. Okay, we'll fit in a little bit.
What about the MOA?
Just that it wasn't on the agenda, update to the agenda.
I would just ask in light of the fastness of what we were doing, and I don't know if this is the perfect time, please correct me if I'm wrong, that it would be a better procedural value, maybe Mr. Drews can weigh in, is that we table the discussion on both of the items concerned, for the idea of having all the details just right and down, and go to a next meeting on this, or would we want to move on this tonight?
We've already, we've already received, on extension, Cosworth Enterprises to act. There is a new deadline of tomorrow.
Okay.
The contract with Cosworth has to be voted on.
And I wasn't aware that had requests for some new cover parts today, so I apologize a lot.
You can do it without.
So now I'll ask for adoption. Okay, well, as for motion to adopt the Resolution of approval consent agenda, is there a motion?
That would be amended to include the MOA.
Thank you, Mr. Drews.
Accept the amendment, approve it, and move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Victoria on the phone.
All right, put your speaker, put near your microphone. For all these.
Victoria, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Is everything all right?
That's at the best speed. You can hear her better than face. That's Councilman Appalozano, she was away, but she wanted to participate in tonight's meeting, given the, you know, the gravity of what we're discussing. So she will be participating by, welcome, Victoria, we're still going through our items. So at this point, can we move to the MOA, or?
Well, that would, that would be.
Are you, Mr. Mayor, you want to item six?
Okay, we're gonna adjourn for five minutes, folks. I think it's President Seaton who assigned the memorandum of agreement. So I want really, really that information, so you remember, memorandum of agreement had to sign by the union. So I like the discussion before we build on that, if I had, is, sorry. Does anybody have any questions, council?
Comments?
Soon we talk about that when we get to the.
Thirty ten?
And everything about the memory.
Yeah.
Just have this memorandum, sussing it out.
Yeah, I think that, as Mr. Leetak said, that under the conditions of we're trying to save money for the town, and we have a reliable, long-term workforce who has done not just a job, but a very hard job for the town. As a matter of fact, interestingly, we brought up Strobridge Lake. We had the Strobridge Lake Festival at one point. One of the things we did to save money was we slung all the trash from the festival into one of the tankers, a group of us. And that's a hard job. People who do this every day in every condition, and by the way, have CDLs who are qualified, are people that we want in Moorestown. Plus, they're people we want to work in Moorestown around our homes, our families. We want these people to do and fulfill all of the things that we're gonna need to do, because we've improved all the things in parks, and we've improved all things such as the town hall. We need these people. I think the memorandum's a great idea. We should move forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Phil, anything?
Sure, you know, I echo Greg right here. I think that, you know, the employees and the guys that we have in the DPW are a great asset to the community. You know, it's what, it's part of Moorestown, and you know, the fact that we're gonna be able to have these guys do more for us as far as, you know, working in the parks, working around, you know, they're still in the community. So I think it's a win-win, and I think we should move forward.
Okay. Victoria, have you heard anything?
Only forty, so you don't have to listen to me over the phone too much. First of all, I'm sorry I put Steve there today, everyone, I'm traveling on business and I couldn't avoid it. And all I'll say is, you know, I'm very glad that we are able to come to an agreement, and, you know, I thank you. Good for everybody, and I, you know, commend everyone who is involved in the negotiation.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to say, when we started looking at this last spring, I don't know if people think this is something that we just did in the past two weeks. This has been something that's been the works for a long time. We still thought a lot of ways to consolidate, to save money, to do shared services. One was the library. You know, we looked at how we could work on saving money there, and we found out that the library as it is is running well. This is something that was very hard for us to do, and it's not something I think any of the council members up here take lightly. When you have people's jobs, put people's jobs in line, it's something that's very difficult to do, and to look at. But I think this is a compromise that we all can be happy with, in the sense that we are gonna keep all those employees, those valued employees that make Moorestown a fabulous place. We've got a lot of holes in public works, you know, I remember talking with Chris last summer about some of our parks, and how we need to up the maintenance on this. I know with our trees, we don't, you know, our tree guys, we don't have enough people to take care of the beautiful trees we have. And everybody knows I'm, I'm, I guess I would say I'm a tree hugger, you know? I love our, I love our trees in town. But we don't have, if we don't have the manpower to take care of it, you know, it just, it doesn't work. And so by putting these people, these valued employees, back into our public works where they can better serve our needs, I think it's a win-win. So we're not losing anybody, we're saving money, which is, which is a goal, but certainly it's not a goal that we look at just for the sense of saving money just to save money. I think we are cognizant of the people and the value they bring to us, and that's one of the reasons that we fought so hard to make this happen. So I'm proud of Scott and Tom and our legal team, Tony and Carmen. I think they did an amazing job, and working with CWA, I think both sides did well, because we could be the stalemate constantly, and it wouldn't be a good thing for any of us. So I wanted to thank them for all their hard work. It truly is appreciated. I know it's something that I couldn't do, because that's too, but you certainly did a great job of that, so thank you for your hard work.
Okay, well said, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, we do have a great sanitation crew. I don't think anyone's gonna argue that. Certainly not lost on us, the job they do, the difficult job they do. Anyone who thinks, right, I went back and buy a trash truck, and an ice storm is easy. Certainly, dare, dare me try it. I know I wouldn't do it. Maybe that's the bottom of my heart. That said, as every council person up here said, you know, taxes are really the issue, weren't they? I've seen the devastating effect of taxes on people, that tax appeal here, and I've seen senior citizens who can't afford their taxes anymore, having to sell their homesteads because they couldn't afford their taxes. Raising taxes is no longer the first option, it's gotta be the last option. So that's why we have to look at every single thing in our budget. Here we have an opportunity to outsource trash at substantial savings while providing, in trash, with regard to trash, the same service. That's important. There are very few opportunities in our budget to look at things we can change and not affect services, which is always our goal, the balance between saving money and providing services. And as Councilwoman Jordan said, over the last few years, we've looked at a lot of, over the last year, we've looked at a lot of things. At the end of the day, the savings weren't worth the risk to the services. So please don't think for a moment this was an easy decision, as far as this voting on the MOA goes. It wasn't. But I feel that we've struck, we've struck a great balance between maintaining the services, and now we can add these guys who know our town, they're part of our family, we can add them into the regular DPW, maintaining our roads, our parks, our buildings. And now we don't have to worry about being reactive, we can start, we can start being a little more proactive and not reactive, and that's important. So I support, what would be my answer?
I guess, you know, I'll, I'll, I just want to take a motion to, for the township to enter into the memorandum of agreement with the union, which is related to the outsourcing of trash.
So moved, second.
Patty, walk off.
Mr. Newcomb?
Yes.
Burman?
Yes.
Ms. Appalitano?
Yeah.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Yeah. And I guess, I guess since you're on the subject, we might as well pull out of the consent agenda resolutions. Sixty-four, 2014, which is awarding, discussion of awarding a contract to Cosworth Enterprises for solid waste collection services.
Thank you.
Is anyone here from Cosworth?
Shows how much they care, right?
Just a second, so we all have time to speak.
No, we just wanna speak before you vote.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
We have a question, we have a question about the vote.
Okay.
And you're voting before anybody gets up there to speak.
Wait a second. That's not fair.
So we're asking you to vote, sir.
We're asking, please give me a moment, okay? We're skipping around here.
We're getting all over the subject.
You will be heard, I understand that, okay? You will be heard. Why are you skipping around?
That's what the vote.
Okay, thank you. You will be heard. We're supposed to just sit down, just sit down. That's what he wants you to do. Just sit down and let him skip around. That's not what I said. That is what you're saying, so I'll sit down. Thank you.
Right now, if I could have a motion to amend the previous motion that adopted the consent agenda, so to pull out, a motion to amend the consent agenda to pull resolutions sixty-four out?
Same.
Same.
At all favor?
Aye.
Did I hear? I think, Mr. Mayor, I think just, can you begin?
Yeah.
We're not voting on the resolution yet.
Yeah, we're not, I'm just trying to pull something together.
It's not the resolution yet.
It will be discussed. We did the award, and then it was supposed to be presentation.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not voting on the award yet.
We're skipping, we're skipping. No, we already did the award.
No.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't. No, we did not. All we did was.
That's, there's some inclusion yet.
There's a lot of inclusion, I. Okay, well, not much of it.
Well, perhaps you're misleading us, sir, with your remarks.
And perhaps you're misleading us by saying that.
So, you know, let's, let's all help each other here, all right? Let's all help each other.
Folks, folks, everyone will be heard on the awarding of the contract, the resolution, before we vote on it, okay? Every single person who wants to speak will be heard, okay? We're just trying to get the agenda order down, okay? That's all we're trying to do. Nobody's trying to pull anything. Everyone will be heard, okay? Thank you. Okay? Okay, so we're going to now, we're gonna, we're gonna stretch my counsel. We're at discussion amongst council first about awarding the contract to Cosworth. I've heard your comments. Does anybody have anything to add?
Yes, yes.
Yes. First, we're gonna read the by title, then we're gonna open up the floor for public comment, okay? Scott, you would read sixty-four dash twenty fourteen by title.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, to awarding a contract. To awarding a contract to Cosworth Enterprises Inc. for solid waste collection services.
Okay. This time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Please come down to the microphone, state your name, your address. If you have a question or a comment, please, we have a lot of people to get to. Please state your question or comment, and please sit down. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. I won't address your violation of the crucial code of law by voting on the MOA without public comment. I will talk about, I will thank you for.
I do need your name and address for that.
Oh, sure. Jonathan Eron, two oh five, Albany Road. And would like to thank you for taking this matter out of the consent agenda where it never belonged. Now, there are three possible reasons why you would wish to proceed with this. One is that you prefer privatization, equal to. The second is you think it's gonna save you money, and the third is patronage. I'm going to discount one in three right out of the way and go right to saving money, which is what I think you're trying to do. You're not going to. For one thing, I love the guys who, who work here, but if you're keeping them on, you're not saving money. The other thing is, is that over time, you're going to see services decline. What happens when you privatize trash? Well, the first contract is usually cheap. The second contract isn't. Because at the time of the second contract, these waste haulers know that you no longer have the personnel, and you no longer have the equipment, which puts them in a much better position to ask for lots more money. The next thing that happens is that you begin to have restrictions on what you can dispose of and the amount you can dispose of. The next thing that happens is that you will find that you will be asked to move to standardized trash bins, which you will be asked to pay for, either the town or individual residents. You will then find out that you can't take anything other than, they won't take anything other than what fits in the trash can, and you will be told what does and does not fit in the trash can. This is what happens. I know this is what happens, because for not fifteen years, I represented trash haulers, and that's what we did. So, there's one other thing that happens. Right now, you can call these guys anytime you want. You'll have to pay overtime maybe in an emergency. When you're pride haulers, you don't have that kind of flexibility. You can call them, but they may not come. Thank you very much. I'm sure you're gonna do whatever you're gonna do anyway.
My name is Robert Xenick. I live at six two six East Main Street in Moorestown. I attended a meeting a couple months ago, and I raised an issue that if our trash workers are required to be drug, alcohol, criminal, and Megan's Law certified, will the new workers, in addition, will the new workers that are working for the trash pickup be required to do that? And Ms. Jordan said that everything would be taken into consideration. Well, I'm not sure what that means. Has any of the specifications for all the workers for the trash pickup been required to be drug, alcohol, criminal, and Megan's Law free?
Cosworth Enterprise is already, does both the criminal background check and the drug alcohol.
As part of our contract with them, or proposed contract, have you required them to not do a background check, but to, but to make sure that all their workers comply with that?
Mr. Xenick, I can definitely, I hear your concern. How was the first meeting when you came to it?
And it's.
I have children, and I definitely, I definitely understand what you're asking. I'm sure Cosworth takes whatever measures are necessary.
So you're speaking for Cosworth? I'm asking, what have we done?
Sir, I didn't interrupt you, let me see.
Have we, what have we done?
Sir.
That's the question.
Okay. Cosworth takes the same precautions as your company takes to not hire pedophiles, drug dealers, or anyone else. I have to say, and you're entitled, you're entitled to your opinion.
How do you know that?
But you're entitled to your opinion, but it's offensive to assume that sanitation workers have any more propensity. I mean, do you want to know for police or any of them?
No, I'm not saying that they have propensity.
Do you want to know for teachers, do you want to know for, I mean, why, why would we assume that?
I, I, absolutely not.
You're entitled to your opinion, you are, but.
Absolutely not, please don't put words in my mouth that I'm saying that any of these men are held for less of a standard than the highest, than, than anyone else. I hold them to the highest standard and they have met it.
They're, Cosworth.
They've met it, and I'm wondering, will, will the new jobber who's coming in be required? Now, you said, I'm sure that they do.
They, they are responsible for their employees, just like all of our members are.
Have you made it a requirement that these workers, that before they bid and all workers who come into Moorestown be required to be drug, alcohol, and criminal free? You're saying that you're sure that they are, how?
Sir, how are they going to have, how are they going to have a workforce? Their workforce, they are responsible for their workforce, just like your employer is, all of our employers are.
That's my workforce, and I'm speaking for them, and I know that they're good workers. You're speaking for Cosworth and you don't know. You're saying, I'm sure, how are you sure? How? Give me, give me something in writing that you've checked out and made out a requirement of that. Citizens as well of the United States. Tell me, you, you told me that you're sure. How?
I'm sure that whatever answer I give you, given your position, isn't going to be, uh, isn't going to be satisfied, so.
Well, give me any answer, I love getting such a good answer.
I told, I told you that they are one of the most, uh, you're, you're worried about their workforce, so am I. This is one of those regulated industries in the country, you don't think their insurance company requires that? And we, this is what we found out from that. They ran the drug test, the criminal background test, they make sure that if, if somebody gets pulled over for a moving violation, right? And that's reported to them. Um, they, they make sure their workforce is safe. I, I find it difficult, your estimate is proven negative, how, how do I know?
Well, we put it in writing to them as part of the contract that they'll make sure that their workers are that. And you, you're saying, no, we're not, we're, I'm just sure that they do that, I'm sure, I'm sure, and.
Your, your concerns are, your, your concerns are my concerns.
Well, have, once again, I've asked the question, have we put it in writing requiring them to, to provide that? That their workers will be drug, alcohol, and criminal free? Is that part of the specifications for the bid?
Obviously, there's a couple, a couple things on that. First of all, the specifications for a solid waste hauling contract are mandated by state law, and the contract that we advertised complied with state law requirements. So, we're, we're limited to some extent to what we can and can't do, but the, the council is concerned, the mayor's concerned, the staff is concerned, because everyone is concerned, that if, if there are going to be folks who are going to be providing services to the township, and they're going to be going house to house, that those folks meet all legal requirements to do that, so that they are providing a public service that is doing it in a manner that does not threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Whatever the law requires with respect to criminal background checks, drug testing, whatever else is required, that is what will be required of this contractor. The council, the township is not going to allow a vendor to go house to house who is not meeting legal requirements to do that, and would do it in a way that would threaten public health and safety.
So then you wouldn't object to put that into the bid process, that it's required?
We're, we're going to, what, what specifically, I just, I was pretty specific about what I said, there's.
I'm saying that there's state laws, there's state laws.
And you're assuming that they're going to comply with state laws, and then we can't make them do anymore. This is a contract, and we can make them do anything we want before we sign on that one.
And we are going to make sure that those vendor employees.
Well, once again, I'm speaking.
That do so in a way that does not threaten public health, safety, and welfare in any respect.
So that be in writing?
We'll go through the specifics with them, and we will make sure that that's what a, that's what a compromise is.
So we'll have that in writing that they will?
And whatever, whatever, whatever needs to be done to achieve that will be done, and will be done in writing.
Listen, it's, it's a simple thing, all workers working in the Moorestown will be required to be drug, alcohol, and Megan-free.
Mr. Zenick, I'm, I'm just, just to clarify, so you're, what you're suggesting is, a company that may or may not, and you're assuming may not, abide by state law, would, would abide by the contract? They're, they're, they'd be willing to ignore state law, they would be willing to ignore.
No, I'm not saying what they would be willing to do, I'm asking what you are willing to do.
Okay.
I'm not in control of them, but hopefully we have some control over our elected officials. I want that, I, I would request that that be put in the contract, that their workers be drug, alcohol, and criminal free.
And your, and your, and your request is noted, and we will do everything to ensure.
Will you, everything would mean putting it in the contract?
We, we're going to do whatever we can do, if that includes putting it into a contract if necessary, to make sure that any employees of this vendor do not, do nothing to threaten the public health, safety, and welfare.
I didn't say threaten, I said, will they be required to be drug, alcohol, and criminal free?
We've answered your question, we're going round and around.
Specifically, will they be required to be in that, will it be in that contract? You're saying, we're going to, we're hoping that they'll do whatever they can.
Thank you, Mr. Zenick, Mrs. Beck.
Please answer me yes or no.
We've answered your question, we just.
Please say yes or no, will it be in the contract?
I'm not giving you the answer you're looking for, I'm sorry, Mr. Zenick.
Well, it's a yes or a no, that's all it means.
Thank you, I do appreciate, so noted, Mrs. Beck, thank you. Take the microphone, please.
Uh, Billy Beck, two zero nine Perry Drive, I think you know then how I feel towards outsourcing. I feel this is something terribly wrong. We were willing to take away jobs and to outsource a service that is very well provided locally. I have a friend who works in a community not far from here where, uh, trash collection is outsourced, and she told me part of the trash is picked up and part of the trash is left behind, and it just stays there until the next time they come around to collect. This is not the type of collection we would want in Moorestown. We are used to having excellent service and we would like to maintain it. This is what we have had, these people deserve a big round of applause. They should not be, we should never have considered firing them, because that's what it amounts to. And when you do that, what you do is we're, we risk adding to the, uh, the, the, the numbers of unemployed people, of which we have too many already, in New Jersey has a very large unemployed population, and nationwide, we also have a large unemployed population. We don't need to go that route, and I think there's, now we have something tentative, and I hope it works if this is really the solution, I can tell this is what you want to do, outsource. Well, you know, this is not the answer.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Beck, uh, we did, we are retiring the employees, we're not letting anybody go. We're, we're, we're transferring them to other, other divisions, uh, so nobody's being laid off, nobody's losing their job.
But they were at risk of, and this is what they thought.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if I agree with that, but you're, okay.
Well, yes, that's my perception from talking to.
Okay, that's fine, you're going to tell your per- perception, I respect that.
Based on their, on what people told me.
You're concerned with the quality of, uh, of the, of the company, that we have, we're discussing that now, so we, no, nobody's voted to outsource anything, that's being discussed. My understanding is the company that we're outsourcing to has quality controls in place, and they're, they're experienced, and, you know, um, you know, they have mechanisms in place, if, if somebody has to complain, they're going to, they're assured they're going to address it. They know top, they know full well, they're going to go under the microscope, we, they're going to, and I can tell you something also, uh, I plan on following those trucks around for the first few weeks to see exactly what, you know, quality of service and, you know, from residents. So, uh, your concerns are million, and their minds lost, so I hear you.
Mrs. Beck, the quality of the service has been a large concern of ours. I myself authored about seventy questions until Mr. Michelle and, uh, Mr. Carew, and in regards to quality of service, I was very concerned. I also investigated every town I could find that had this kind of service and could not find quality of service issues. In regards, in regards to the, in regards to the idea that we are doing something about just taxes, I would extend that to, I've been going to council meetings here for twenty-five years, and on those, in those council meetings, many, many times, people have come and said, we are sticking to on fixed incomes, and we cannot afford to live in Moorestown anymore. That echoes in my head when I think about the time, we can do something about their taxes to lower them. People with housing, those were issues in regards to the towns. In the meantime, the great workers that we have in Moorestown, holding on to them actually with this proposal is value-added. We believe we are doing a value-added, correct me if I'm wrong, council, uh, a value-added thing, and continually trying to improve the town by taking this move. We're actually taking one service and making it become a better service by having more people able to do that we trust and know, a service that is new in the town, adding to the services that are there.
Well, that, that's good, if it will work this way, fine, but I don't want to see people getting hurt, good people getting hurt.
Be a good, so that that whole community, yeah.
People are our people getting hurt here.
Ms. Beck, if I could just say one thing too, um, when we did this contract in the last bid, it was an apples-to-apples contract. It was a contract that, Moorestown is known for, for its superior, I think, superior services, and it was something that was made very, um, aware of in the contract, that they would collect all the trash, that like, things like you said, half the trash would be collected and the other, because it wasn't, you know, it didn't fit their criteria. That's not the way it was, was put into the contract, it's put into the contract so it will be exactly the way it is now. If that doesn't happen, then that's, there's, there's going to be a breach of a contract. So that, I just want you to know that that's something that we looked at very hard and very seriously, and I think if it goes the way it should, it will all be done, you know, just, just the way it is now. I have a business that gets picked up by a private hauler, or, or, um, contractor, and if, if a town decides not to put in their bid contract, they want certain things not picked up, they can't, they can do that, and I think that some of our surrounding towns have done that, we're only going to pick up this because they need to save money on their, on their, uh, contracts. We are not, we are putting out for everything that we do right now, it's going to be the same thing. That is, that is what we're putting in our contracts.
So I will let this part of it go, and I will just say, let's not hurt good people, let's not hurt them. When we want to, when we consider letting go of people, we're causing people to become depressed, their wives to become depressed, and maybe their children to become depressed, all which may affect their performance in school, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
Sir. I'm George Williams, uh, five twelve North of St. Louis, Moorestown. I was going to read something into the record, but I, I think what I'd rather do is ask questions because I think there's some. Uh, one of the questions I had, I think Mr. Newcomer answered it, regards to the quality of service of private trash haulers, uh, local. Correct me if I'm wrong, whether approximately thirty-seven, thirty-eight towns or counties that now have private service, out of forty-one. So, and there's obviously a reason for that. Uh, and I, I know a gentleman earlier who was talking about the disparity and the issues and problems with privatization, and yet I'm surprised to hear that so many towns and counties actually privatized, so that's kind of confusing to me. And my other point is that I, I don't know the exact dollar savings, but apparently it's a pretty considerable amount of money. I also know that when all of you folks ran, a lot of the supportive work and campaigns, one of the premier promises you made was to provide the most efficient, affordable service that you can to the municipality. And so you're not doing what you shouldn't be doing, you're actually doing what you should be doing by exploring this. Now, whether or not you vote or not, obviously, is your decision, but unless you can find a negative or a reason, or someone is personally opposed for personal reasons or philosophical reasons, that's one thing, but unless you have, I, I, I don't see how, I know it's an issue for some people because it impacts, it impacts them personally, but as a municipality, and as a leader, leaders in a municipality such as Moorestown, it seems like it's a pretty easy decision if number one, you're not losing people, and number two, you're going to save a considerable amount of money. If you want to talk about the issue of the quality of the service of private, I too have a business and use a private service, I don't have an issue, and as a matter of fact, we have a place in Maryland that's also private service, nationally known, and the entire community is, and they all use the same service because they're good. So I don't know what specifically the gentleman was speaking about earlier, I know he said he represented trash companies, but I don't know that that necessarily applies in this case. So, I just wanted to make the, the point that, let you know that I support this, and I support it because I don't see a negative impact nearly as much as I see a positive effect to the township, and if you can save that kind of money, whether it's this or any other endeavor going forward, you should do that. Uh, one thing I do recall was there was a lot of contention, a lot of issues concerning the dispatch being moved to the county, and obviously, that's turned out pretty well, and certainly, there was a lot of contention over the nickel, this was in, anybody who looks at that, I don't think there's any more already have left because it's been so successful. So the moves have been made in the past, have been progressive, quicker down, I think this is a good move also. I don't think that the nature, the negative impact regarding the people involved is going to be so great that it can be compared to the savings that you can realize, especially in light of the fact you can retain these people. Thank you.
Sir. Jack Lance, uh, three oh two East Main Street, Moorestown, New Jersey. I have a quick question, um, these savings, we, we keep talking about savings. I can bend, that's good. The, the savings, do, do we have a spreadsheet, or do we have something to inform the people, even tonight, maybe, of, of the exact savings that you, you can show us in maybe some kind of format that, that actually shows us? Because the only thing we mentioned was, it, it cost us four twenty-five, is that what the bid is going for? It's going to cost us four twenty-five. So my question mainly is, do we have a spreadsheet to show this, improve this?
No.
We do not. We do. Because, what, my question into that will be, does that four twenty-five, does that include the tipping fees as well?
Could I just answer to the fact that we've seen fifteen spreadsheets on this?
I'm just curious why, why.
All right, all right, what, what, me ask the last question. The tipping fees were never, are, are not part of this one.
Wait, are we starting with that question or the first question?
I'm, I'm going to start with the tipping fees because that's the one.
All right, I just wanted so everybody understands, because I don't want to confuse anyone.
Tipping fees, just, just for everyone that doesn't know what Mr. Lance is talking about, there are two cost components to sanitation. One is collection, which is what we're discussing tonight, the other is disposal, which is the cost of taking the sand, the, the trash to a landfill.
Correct.
You get charged on your tipping fees, which is what that's called, by the way. Assuming the same trash is picked up, there should be no impact to the tipping fees, except for, I believe the county raised the rate slightly this year. Uh, so the tipping fees are not factored into this.
Are they factored into the one point two million percent?
No, they are not.
They're not?
They are not. Um, and the spreadsheet I have, um, because there is employee information on it, is confidential. We could put something together for the public, uh, that shows where the savings are.
Okay.
Um, I, I can tell you the.
It's a good question.
The, the cost, the value of the contract in year one, um, it's four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. Goes up to four hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, excuse me, four hundred twenty-seven thousand and seventy-one dollars. In year three, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now, a lot of people have asked me recently when they heard that we were trying to negotiate an agreement with the CWA in order to save jobs, what Mr. Eron mentioned earlier about, well, how can you save money? And with all due respect to Mr. Eron, he, he, he did not have all the facts to make statements of statements, especially since most of them are not true. Um, the, there are.
Fortunately, they were all true, and thank you.
There are currently six openings in Public Works that have been opened, uh, anywhere from the last, the, the most recent one was three and a half months ago, to about thirteen, fourteen months ago. Those jobs were not filled, so a good portion of the sanitation staff will fill those positions. Those were positions funded in twenty thirteen, uh, council did not have to fund in twenty fourteen because they were empty going into the new area, but now we'll slide these guys in too. Does call for, for jobs to be created, but net loss is seven positions in the Public Works labor force. That's part one of your savings. Part two is concessions with the CWA, which amount to between a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred thousand dollars per year. The third major cost savings is the fact that your operating expenses, your fuel, your vehicle maintenance, the cost of a new truck, which was two hundred four thousand when we last bought one about five or six years ago, those costs go away, so that's where the savings come in.
Okay, and, and with all due respect, I, I completely understand, and I guess, I guess where I'm going with this, uh, Mr. Carew, is back November, I was at the twenty-fifth, uh, November, I was at a council meeting, and I believe everybody was here, but Mr. Newcomer, I don't think you were here that evening.
I was, I wasn't.
I'm pretty sure you were absent, but, anyway, um, the, the point I wanted to get at, I just, I read it about five. I read it about five times, and I'm pretty sure I, I could point it out for you if you'd like, but the, the point, the point of the matter is, Scott, you told me personally, you told me back in November, that you would get some numbers together by December, by December's meeting, and that you'd be able to present them to me. And that day came and went, and now it's the end of January, and the only reason I'm finding out about this is because it's on the agenda, otherwise, nothing else has been presented to me. I mean, not just to me, it's, it's not just me, it's the township in general. There's been no talk about this unless we've come forward to talk about it, and I think that's where people are most upset about. The fact is, you're telling me these numbers right now, but they've never been presented to us, and you told me you would. So I'm kind of at like an awkward point with, with this council. I, I don't understand what's going on.
Mr. Lance, you are correct, I was absent.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to bring that up, and I'm not trying to show you that you told me, but I, I'm doing a lot of research and, and, uh, you weren't here that night, right?
And, and, and I apologize, because you have to understand, two hours ago, there was no reading of the contract, anyway, there was no reading of the contract.
But why are we rushing this? What is the rush?
Rush, it's been a couple of months.
So, I've been working on this for several months, and you told me you would have something for me, why haven't we still not in the end of January?
Because, because the final, the final draft of the agreement with the CWA heard at about three o'clock this afternoon.
I, I still am confused.
And, and I apologize that, that I did not have time for you at three o'clock this afternoon.
So two, two months, two, two months, and now three o'clock this afternoon.
Do you want to tie the question up? Uh, I hear you, I, I, I respect your question, and you want to know what the process was, and you want to...
I, I want to see the numbers, is what I want to see.
And, and you've heard them.
No, I have, I have not, I have not heard.
Well, we're here now, and we're discussing it.
Yeah, but that's not, I want to see...
This is going to work in progress, and, um, we're presenting it now, what's the difference if, if you presented it in December or now?
Well, because maybe, maybe, maybe we could see, maybe we could see the savings for our own eyes, and then many people...
Well, that's not my question, my question was, what's the difference if you got the numbers in December as opposed to now? We're, we're, we're presenting, we're discussing this now in an open meeting, the doors are open, it's been recorded, taped.
I still don't have the numbers! I still don't have them! You, you, I still don't have the numbers. We're opening this up tonight for discussion, to vote on it, and that's it, period, period. No chance for us to look at these numbers to understand where you're coming up with this decision. It, it's, it's, it's obvious.
Lack of transparency.
I mean, it's not fair, is what it is. It's not fair. You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Along his lines, the transparency issue. We go in from one point two million to four hundred twenty-five thousand, you have an eight hundred thousand dollar disparity. You're saying that the tipping fees are not included in the one point two million, million, you are already included in the four point, four hundred twenty-five thousand. What makes up the one point two million? An eight hundred thousand dollar disparity between providing the same service is a huge disparity. Um, is it insurance? If you're taking the same bodies that you have working currently, and you're sliding to somewhere else in the township, we're not saving on payroll or benefits, uh, some because of the new agreement that you have, but eight hundred thousand dollars, either there's been incompetency on running that department, or something's been majorly overlooked. So I'm a little confused on why such a huge disparity.
Well, well, and I just, yeah, maybe Tony would look here with this from a legal standpoint. Uh, here's how the one point two million is added up. Uh, it's eleven positions with a total base salary of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Eleven, seven guys.
Six guys.
Now, there are eleven, two thousand thirteen, eleven paid positions in sanitation.
Yeah, table's four thirty.
Folks, 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 let him speak, please, okay? Folks, let him speak. Thank you.
Six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five, six hundred and eighty dollars in base salary. Twenty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars in longevity, uh, minus thirty-four hundred dollars, or, excuse me, add one thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars, one employee has a healthcare outback, so the outback of healthcare, we pay thirty-four hundred dollars for that. Um, social security and Medicare, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, healthcare costs, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Worker's comp assessment, ninety-three thousand and seventy-nine dollars, for a total employee cost of one million, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Plus thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime, twenty thousand dollars in active duty, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in meals, pension cost of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. That gets you to a total employee cost of one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, plus another fifty thousand dollars in operating expenses, gets one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I was under the impression we had three trucks, two guys in each truck, and one supervisor, and we decided that we had eleven employees. I know, I know of two employees that get paid from the sanitation department and work in other departments, why they're in the sanitation department's budget, I don't know, maybe it's part of that as well. In addition, I think this is what the gentleman over there was speaking as far as transparency, this is the stuff that kind of, the people want to know, where does this one point two million come from? You're throwing this, throwing the number out there, and people are like, well, where does it come from? As compared to four hundred twenty-five thousand bid that you're going to award to this company for providing the upcoming search, so...
Mike, if, if you don't mind, just real quick, and I promise I'll sit down. Um, Mike, Dave DeShields, I'm sorry, Jack Lance, three oh two, East Main Street, Moorestown, New Jersey.
Still lives there.
David DeShields is here right now, um, with us, and, and I did ask him if I could say his name in public, because I know, we don't want to do that for some reason, but, um, Dave never worked in sanitation, but we have him listed on a roster that I did receive from Patricia Hunt, when I asked for the request, that he is in sanitation, but yet he has never worked in sanitation unless it was ultimately needed and the guys were overloaded, but yet he's listed on sanitation. So his numbers don't sound right. Okay, folks, we appreciate that, and we've assisted here through the township budget. Okay, these numbers come through our CFO, our Tom Mann... But obviously, we shouldn't vote on this tonight, I have this... Okay, thanks, Mr. Lance, thank you for your opinion, I appreciate that, I do.
What, what, Mr. Crew, write off to us, is that available? I think it should be available, probably by the night, but...
Well, the sheet I'm reading will have some information, I will, I will have a sheet that's shared with the public when I pass it over.
No, we're talking about...
Yes, too much click.
I think you should put out the union had this information as well, and they agree with you.
Yeah, that, that's, that's an interesting point, this is information, Tom, watch out the microphone.
Tom Rochelle, I just think it's important to know that the CWA members and leadership did have this information as well, this was given to them, it was an open process, working with them, uh, they had a chance to, if you were to go through the information, and at the end of the day, even the people you're speaking about, they're still employed.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm just going to be...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just confused, because if we're using a guy that, let's say, is listed in sanitation, but he's really not, what, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to get to the numbers, if, if he's not in sanitation, why is he listed as sanitation, and is he one of the eleven guys that we're accounting for in sanitation?
That is, that is where the Public Works Director has him assigned, and that's where he's on the budget.
So we're going to throw this on the Public Works Director?
I told you where he has the people signed.
I'm just curious, I, I...
If you look at the budget, that's where the, that's where the people are charged, eleven people charged to the sanitation...
I, I went to school here in town, and we have to be accountable, we can't pass the buck.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Lance, but your opposition to this is well noted, I do, I mean, seriously, I, I understand it, and I respect your position, but that's...
That's it.
That's all we...
Sit down and just, that's it.
Mr. Zanick, likewise, your opposition is noted.
No, I, sir, I, I didn't, I have the same sheet here that shows eleven employees, and that is only six really in the Public Works, yet we're computing the savings on eleven phantom employees that are in that department, because they're being charged to the sanitation department, but they're not assigned there. Like Mark Twain said, there's three kinds of lies, lies, damn lies, and statistics, and I think you're using statistics here to justify your cause to eliminate jobs, because it says it right here on your paper.
Any other questions or comments from members of the public?
I'm, I'm a little confused with that last comment, we're eliminating jobs?
No, we're not.
Positions, positions, we're eliminating positions.
So, so if I'm getting its tenor of what's saying here, then you think we'd rather just save money, and, or, or, or keep it at one point two million dollars, and, and pass our residents, when we know that we can do it better, and save jobs of the whole entire department, and keep them there so that they can help us bolster our Public Works departments?
I am not opposed to you saving money, or anybody here saving money, but you're using statistics here of eleven people, and there's only six in that department. And, and like they keep saying, there's, there's an absence of transparency here, that you're showing eleven, you're computing, you're getting bids on eleven, yet there's only really six people working. Then when you say you're going to come here the next month and show these statistics, you don't do it, and you bring it up tonight, and you're going to vote on it. You have to live up to what you say. If you say you're going to do something, you have to do it, and if you can't do it, then you postponed the vote. But handle the first thing that you promised, is to, to go in here and show those figures, Mr. Lance.
Am I wrong, my...
I'm not opposed to you saying you need it.
When we're talking, when we're talking, some of these, some of these positions that are open, that you're saying that they're competition?
Well, let, let, let's, let's be perfectly clear. Uh, the question was asked, how's the one point two million calculated? I gave the correct answer, as calculated in our budget. I also told Mr. Lance that, that we had a net loss of seven positions to the entire Public Works, uh, manpower force. That also is correct. No one's playing any games, no one's trying to pull the wool over your eyes. If that were the case, Mr. Lee Taggert would have had a lot different tenor when he spoke at the beginning of the meeting. Okay. Mike Locatell, five twenty-six, East Main Street.
Um, I, I know there's a lot of emotion in the room, and I for one applaud our guys in, in the sanitation department, because they have done an incredible job throughout the years providing service for us here in Moorestown. With that said, this is a very unique opportunity, I think I've rarely seen in municipal government, and that's, uh, to be able to save money and yet still shift or allocate manpower into another needed part of the department. I mean, you know, we're arguing over the sanitation pickup, and, you know, guys, you notice we've had four snowstorms, Moorestown's streets are horribly cleared compared to what they have been in the past. We can definitely see the lack of manpower throughout the rest of the Public Works Department with, like Stacy said, with the tree cutting, with snow removal, with other aspects of, of delivering service to the community. And for you guys to figure out a way to save money by privatizing one portion of the department, shifting all that manpower, which is, unless I have it wrong, all that manpower throughout the rest of the department, to serve the community in a better way, I, I don't understand what the objection is, but I support it, and, you know, thank you for thinking outside the box.
Pass, and I do appreciate it. Um, but I, I don't understand this effort, I think we're going in a direction we don't want to make, I think we're, I think we're making a mistake with this privatization. In three years, when this contract's up, I'm afraid we're really going to get it stuck to us. I think that, uh, I think our trucks are not going to be in any shape in three years to go back to the road and pick up trash. Um, I don't think the level of service is going to be the same, Haddonfield regrets her decision, or, excuse me, Haddonfield did not choose to privatize, Delanco did and wished they hadn't. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to benefit from this. I'm going to haul a couch away for a hundred dollars. Every time somebody has a couch or a tree stump to haul away, or an old bookcase, I'm going to get a hundred dollars. I'm going to benefit from this. I feel bad about it. I feel bad that the citizens of Moorestown aren't going to get the same kind of service. And Mr. Williams, you're my neighbor, you don't know me, someday I'll tell you about Dispatch. I'm not supposed to talk about it, but one-on-one, I'll tell you everything you want to know about Dispatch. And again, ladies and gentlemen on council, and Mr. Crew, I do appreciate what you're trying to do. I think it's fair, I think it's honest, I don't see anything wrong with it. And I, I think three years, three years from now, we're going to regret what we've done here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bank, before, before you begin, Mr. Bank, I just want to make one comment, because now it's a broad advice. The idea that, that when this contract is over, the township's going to be taken to cleaners is unfounded. Uh, we did our research. Uh, towns that are, have outsourced sanitation have not gone bad. Uh, I was in a meeting today with the Public Works Director of Willie Carroll, they have been out for longer than we have, they are under a dollar actually less than, than us on their renewal. Uh, it's, the, the, the idea that there's only one caller out there, and he's going to hold us for ransom, it's just not true. If anything, now everyone knows where the number's at, and anybody that wants our business after the next contract's going to have to beat that number. That's what's been happening with renewals, not the other way around. And if you do your research, you'll see that. Sir, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Good evening. Edwin Bank, two zero nine Perry Drive. Quite simply, and it may be true, I have spent more than a couple of hours in my professional life working numbers. Uh, but if you look, just compare two numbers, four hundred, was it four hundred twenty-five thousand versus one point two million, three to one roughly, uh, it would, and with the detail of the one point two, including, say, one, six hundred odd thousand bucks just for a paycheck labor, two hundred thousand for healthcare, I can't conceive that even if the Moorestown employees were grossly overpaid, and if you would argue they were terribly inefficient, and we get numbers of eleven positions, or six, or this guy is on it, but he never worked a job, and stuff like that, I, I, I can't deal with that. But I can't agree in my mind, there's a three to one, that the same thing can be done with one-third the cost. Could be, but I have trouble without seeing a lot of detail. Thank you very much. And we get numbers of eleven positions, or six, or this guy is on it, but he never worked a job, and stuff like that, I, I, I can't deal with that. But I can't agree in my mind, there's a three to one, that the same thing can be done with one-third the cost. Could be, but I have trouble without seeing a lot of detail. Thank you very much.
It's also important to you, I think it's also important to council. If I can point to a letter to the editor by now Deputy Mayor Stacy Jordan, she's quoted as saying, "The town council has also taken additional steps to be accessible to our residents and give a voice to the people we are elected to represent." Later in this same letter, it says, mentions something about giving taxpayers the attention they deserve. Well, respectfully, just because you say it doesn't mean it's so. Not only, only is there a lack of transparency, no discussion, feedback, or serious engagement of resident stakeholders in the process, but there is no official record of it either. Minutes, minutes are available for only five of the last twelve council meetings from July onward. Not that there is much to cover in the minutes, anyway, we're thankful to the patch for coverage of this issue, because without patch, we wouldn't know what council is up to. So transparency is also further called into question when it appears that meeting agendas seem to obfuscate council's intent, referring to solid waste services on tonight's agenda instead of sanitation, a term that we've all referred to when we've talked about this issue. But this isn't, this isn't unusual, because a couple of months ago, when we were talking pay to play, the ordinance there was titled revising the limits on political contributions, instead of a more aptly described increasing the limits on political contributions. Further, tonight's agenda item was placed under consent agenda, where routine matters are passed en masse. As I've said earlier, this is hardly a routine matter. So where does this leave us? In my opinion, and I would argue that for many here, the process is broken. Council has a decision-making process that excludes the very people, council... Council has a decision-making process that excludes the very people council is elected to represent. This is really the best that you can do? It can't be that hard. How hard is it to share information? We're not only your constituents, but we're your neighbors, and quite frankly, we deserve better. So my question to you is, on a scale of one to 10, how would you rate yourselves on the level of transparency in this issue with the stakeholders, your residents?
Thank you, Mrs. Petrelli. The RFP was discussed in a public meeting. I'm sorry you weren't there. There have been several public meetings on the dates where we discussed sanitation. Several members of the audience were here. I'm sorry you weren't there.
No, I've been to a lot of these meetings, Mr. Petrelli.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you weren't there, but...
You're part of, you're part, my point was, you're part of...
Man, I'm not gonna argue with you. You had your chance, I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me, okay? All right, I let you speak and read your stand statement on my line. Now, as far as, as far as the figures go, we're here discussing it right now. We're at a public meeting discussing it. The doors are open. This meeting, it's being recorded. This is an open public meeting. There's been plenty of transparency. I'm sorry that you missed it, and I, I mean that sincerely from the bottom of my heart. I'm sorry that, you know, for whatever reason, you've chosen to come and ask me on a scale of a 10. I think it's been a 10. We discuss it on a 10. This is a mixed, this is a mixed, we have Republicans and Democrats here. The key stakeholders have been involved. We met three times, three different meetings with the CWA, lasted for hours to make sure the employees, every single concern they had was addressed. So I apologize if you don't feel there's been transparency. I think there is. I think we're gonna disagree on it. But thank you very much for your statement, Mrs. Petrelli.
Can I, I'd like to respond. The comments that, the discussion that we've had in here has been the result of comments brought forth by the public as part of the public conversation. They have all the agendas here, Mr. Caillau. Would you like to show me where on them? We, we have anything that talks about sanitation outsourcing?
I'm gonna disagree on the transparency. You asked me a question.
I'm just, you can, they're right here, if you wanna, you can...
Thank you, Mrs. Petrelli. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tarr Smith. My name is Tarr Smith, I live on 151 West Central Avenue. This might be a superficial question, but the, the personal amenities, like having the recycling center open, and the guys that are, that work there, they help out the older people. I got a father-in-law who's a resident of Moorestown, and he doesn't get around to these guys who are out of their way. Will we lose that? I mean, just, just in a personal note, that those guys are there, or someone will be there to help out people.
They will be manned, and they can be the father-in-law, and they'll be out.
And basically, they'll be open on a regular scheduled basis.
I don't know, I'm not sure about the, the schedule, because we have other issues with that. Not good to residents, but related to contractors dumping things here, so we're trying to work on that. As to answer the question, we're gonna do our best to keep it as accessible to the services.
Okay, like keep it the same, more or less?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Bye.
Warren, 570 Albany Room. And I just wanna say, first of all, I appreciate having trash pickup, because I do have a property in another location, it's a rental property, where we don't have trash pickup, and we actually have to pay private. I know, we obviously pay taxes to cover that, but at this other location, we have to be there to bring our trash, or again, pay for a private company. So I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that, I wanna ask a question first. Are we gonna, you said you're gonna maintain the trucks and keep them for a period of time?
Yes.
So if the services weren't appropriate, we might reinstate?
I suppose you agree with that, yeah.
Well, otherwise, I just wanted to commend the council for getting, you know, max value and keeping jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to like to address the idea of the appropriateness or the ability of the service we're gonna get to be perfect. Nothing is perfect. And as a matter of fact, I actually had experience on two ends in trash. And I, when I was very young, was the incinerator operator for Burlington County Hospital. And it was a very long title, and a couple of my fellow people didn't like that. I had a lot of trash that I moved by hand. And then when I was somewhat older, I was a person who was in charge of the outsourcing for over 300 sites for a company. None of these things, none of those jobs will be perfect, but we have an adequate staff in Mr. Michelle and Mr. Carew, who will go out and make sure that it is, when there is a problem, it will be dealt with, just as they do with every other department. And that's important to understand it. It's not going to be perfect, but it is the best thing we can do, I think. And this idea of going forward in this manner is the best thing we can do, considering, as I said before, the seniors and the people that we have that are very value-added. It's the continuous improvement that the town needs to do to have the best, best Moorestown going forward.
Greg?
Vicki Sewell, 712 Iron Post Road, Moorestown. I just wanted to address the recycle center dump, as was just brought up, and make sure I'm, I'm speaking as a first businessperson in the town of Moorestown, and it is incredibly important that that remain open as it has been, and the help there available to help people, because I deal with a lot of people who are moving, and if we don't have that facility as it is now, or close to, we're gonna have curbs lined with trash. I just wanna make sure you understand our feeling on that.
We do, if you're heard, and, and we're definitely gonna work on that.
If there's any more conversation needed about this, I'll be happy to bring in the troops, so.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm back. I wanted to bring something up that you folks had an opportunity to say or respond, but you didn't. Natural rules and requirements of what it is, and it is not allowed under the Falkner Act, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sure you understand, if you're circle council, that not everything you do can be just that easy to publicize and broadcast in a manner that would appease the public, because quite frankly, some of it involves personnel litigation, which is private until such time it comes into the scene. You make it public, and it puts everything into into zone. And the Falkner Act is very strict about that. So while some people may not feel that you have the transparency you should have, you're not boards of directors or a private company, your public servants that are bound by the rules and regulations of the Falkner Act, which I believe is plenty, I'm not sure. But that's important for people to know, and that's why perhaps the transparency that they think they should get, they can't. That, plus the fact, you only be, what, four times a month? Some of that is closed session, some of that is open, unless you're in attendance, you can't. People aren't gonna hear it anyway. But the other thing that, does the amount of employees affect the bottom line in terms of savings?
Could you clarify that question?
The amount of employees, whether it's seven or 11, it's not really impacting the savings that you will realize with regards to the privatization contracts, is that correct?
The, the savings derives from seven fewer throughout the entire public works, seven fewer.
Right. You incur an additional cost as a result of moving employees to another...
Yes, there are four jobs being created.
And has that been accounted for?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that, there are kind of clarifications that people can relate to, because they need to see the bottom line, okay?
What were we talking about?
It was, that's it. You know, I, I just feel that it's a lot, often things are lost in translation. It's very difficult to communicate what, what, how you think and how someone else thinks, and then to be able to come to a meeting of minds. And unless people listen, they don't always hear. So it's important to listen. And, and, and I'm defending you with regards to the Falkner Act and what you can and can't do, because I've been there, I know what it's like. And it's very, very difficult. And I know you feel pressured because the majority of people in the audience do before against them, but there's also a majority in the community, and they're not here. You, you wanna be careful of this if they are. And since they're not, apparently, that the move you're making is in the right dispath, quite frankly, because you're saving money without, in my opinion, affecting the loss of jobs, which is very important. Thank you.
I have one additional question. I've not heard any, anyone address this, this area topic. Warren Haskins, 400 Glen Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
The question is, what happens with bulk collections?
It'll be continued to be picked up, as is. The only thing, the only thing that the contract is not secure in terms of the same service that you're getting now is, and Casworth's gonna take several months to mobilize to get started, is if they will need to change the route schedule. So the only thing that would possibly change is your day of pickup. Other than that, what's picked up now will continue to be picked up.
So the reference to $100 a sofa, that's, that's nebulous?
You can put the sofa down if you want. If it's nice, I might take it, but otherwise, you know, I'll take it.
Your question was, is the sofa still going to be picked up by, just as it is now, by the people who are, are outsourced as we come? Was that your question, sir?
Yeah, yeah. You referenced...
Mr. Carew, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So that's the answer to your question. Any other members of the public who should come to the microphone, come forth and you shall be heard. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the meeting on this one particular ordinance, and I'll head up to the floor of council. Any further discussion on this before we go on it? Mr. Newcomer?
I would just like to comment that on the November 25th minute, which is part of all of the minutes that I researched for this, there's a comment, or a portion of that. Mayor Jordan advised that the comments will be taken into consideration, ensured Mr. Lance and council will be reviewing all concerns and issues related to outsourcing. That, in my opinion, has been done because we did it in the way that's required, as Mr. Williams said, thank you, Mr. Williams, very much, by the Falkner law, which governs how a contract such as this is negotiated. That is a very important point, and some of the discussion tonight is natural concerns, but we should understand that we all need to deal with the law, and we here have to deal with the law. That is a very important point, and we have tried very hard to do that. Mr. Chaco and I have met with Mr. Michelle and Mr. Carew a great deal to find this solution. There were other solutions.
And Mr. Yours, would you know?
And Mr. Yours, thank you, I forgot that. There were other solutions. This solution saves the people and brings the people whom we know are a valid and great set of workers to positions to add value to the town and reorganize in the sense that incorporating that, that's why it's, it does, that's why I say.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomer. Mary, then?
No, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, this council, there's talk about this transparency, and like, and like Mr. Newcomer said, and Mr. Williams said, we do as much as we can to get out there. I, I think Mr. Carew would have loved to have talked to people and told them what was going on contact-wise back in December, but we can't. We're not allowed to talk about this contract, and that's why we appointed Greg and Chris to do that. And so, and, and we felt that because we had a D and R, they were able to work together with that system for town, so that was, so that we couldn't have people saying it was just one party against it. This is not about parties. It's, it's what I think the five of us have been trying to do all year long, which is, is save our taxpayers money, yet give them the services that they've come to know and expect. And this contract, like, like was stated before, there was other options we could have gone. Quite frankly, you know, we, we could have done it, and we could have said, you know what? We're not even gonna accept those other holes, we're gonna deal with what we've had, we've been dealing with it for the past few years, we're just gonna keep going. And all five of us on this council were concerned about our employees, and we were concerned about our staff, their families, and our neighbors. You know, they're, they're good people, and we took, I mean, it's, I've, I've lost sleep over this, I don't know about anybody else, again, I gotta keep my wrinkles over it because I'm trying to figure out how to get this done. And I think we've come to a solution tonight that enables us to keep our valued employees to help us out in other areas, maintaining those assets that we want to maintain, but yet saving money. And I know change is difficult, and people don't like change, and it comes hard for some people, but I think we need to move forward, and it's gonna be something that, you know, we will reevaluate. And if it's not working, it's not working, and we'll deal with it, and, and we're keeping our trucks, we're keeping, you know, our resources, and we're, we're keeping our bodies. And if it doesn't work, then, then we know, we can go back to the way it is, but from everything that we've researched, everyone that we've talked to, every company that we've dealt with, it's all led to this place, and this is the best possible solution I think that we can come to by saving jobs, but still saving money. So, you know, I, I respect everyone's positions, I understand where you're coming from. It's, it's a scary thing to have that change, but I think it's, you know, when you're talking about you're saving those jobs, I, I don't know how we can do anything different.
Thank you. Mr. Burley?
Thank you. I, I've sat here listening to you guys tonight, one by one, come up to the microphone, and it's really unique. I had the exact same questions when we started this process, the exact same concerns. You know, why do we have so many guys here, so many guys here? And Mr. Carew can attest, I've, I've been relentless in my phone calls to them, you know, day in and day out, asking these questions. And, you know, we've, we've gone through this, and we've asked the same questions, we've looked at it from every possible angle. We wanted to make sure that nobody was gonna get hurt in the process, we wanted to make sure that taxes are gonna stay the same in this process, and, you know, I, I've lost sleep too. I mean, and then just, you know, just wandering about, and, you know, I, I think we're doing the right thing, and I think less said than better right now because it's all been said.
Mrs. Palatano, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here. Is that what you're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add?
Do you have anything to add?
Anytime?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Ken, we heard from a lot of people tonight on both sides of the issue, and, you know, what I wanna say is that I think everyone who spoke tonight, and everyone on town door, and all of our township employees have one common thing, which is that we all hear about the quality of life in our town. And we may disagree about the means of how to preserve that, but I hope we that we acknowledge that, you know, we're really all on the same side in terms of wanting the best for our town, and for the people in our town. And, you know, on the table today is the question of the quality of our sanitation, the quality of our department of public work, and the cost of living in our town. And the plan that we have devised and that we're going with, the way I look at it, we are maintaining the quality of our sanitation, we are improving the quality of our department of public work by making sure that it's better set up, and we're...
Nobody likes change, I don't either. And, you know, but, you know, we don't have options here any longer. That said, regarding the transparency issue, you know, you're here at the meeting, here we are, it's being discussed. I don't, I don't know what else we could have done for you, but I hope you understand. But we, we have a decision to make as far as the employees go. We worked hard to bridge the gap and, and retain the employees while maintaining our service, and that's important, and I don't think that can be overlooked. But I do appreciate everybody coming to be part of the discussion, whether you agree with it or not, whether you point your finger at us, whether, whatever, it's still important that you're here, and that's what our, our government is about, and I do thank you about that, I do thank you for that. That said, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract to Casworth Enterprises, Resolution 6420-14.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Go first, go, and then Greg. Patty, you will call?
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
Mr. Newcomer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yeah.
Mr. Palatano?
Yes.
Mayor Caillau?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. We actually have other things to do tonight. Okay. We have to present requests, in fact, I don't know, seven, which is resident requests and presentation. If there's a resident request, request, presentation, come to the microphone.